Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll bring this regular city council meeting to order. You'd all rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. If you would remain standing, we are honored today to have Boy Scout Troop 505 from the City of Sebastian that will be doing our Pledge of Allegiance. Men, if you could come forward, please.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you so much for that, gentlemen. It's always, always a pleasure and an honor to have the Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts or any of the other civic organizations come and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we welcome those types of organizations to come at any time. Just get with our wonderful city clerk, and she will make the arrangements for that. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd has asked for an excused absence tonight. Councilmember Yovino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any agenda modifications this evening? Hearing none. That'll lead us to Proclamations, Awards, and Brief Announcements. I will start by a presentation from Judy Baragala from the Sebastian River Art Club.
Hello, Vice Mayor Hill. I mean, Mayor Hill, Vice Mayor Kitchen, and city council members. Excuse me, I have a little cold under the weather here. I'm Judy Bergerella, 110 Thunderbird Drive, Sebastian, and president of Sebastian River Art Club. And this is Vicki Lada, our treasurer, and she's also a resident of Sebastian. And it's with my pleasure to present the city with a check, excuse me, in amount of $500 from the members of the Sebastian River Art Club in appreciation for the use of the building at 1245 Main Street, otherwise known as the Art Center. And Vicki's going to present you with the check, and I have copies of the letter.
She'll go ahead and accept this from you guys, okay? Thank you.
Joe, okay. May I say a few words?
Yes, please do.
The use of the Art Center has enabled us not only to enjoy and share our talents and resources with others, but to use these resources for philanthropic purposes in and around the city of Sebastian. Thank you. Sebastian River Art Club is an art club with a heart. A great deal of our energy as a group and as individuals is spent raising funds and awareness for causes and charities that we believe in. And included with this letter is a list of some of these efforts. And you should also know that Sebastian Quilters, who share the building with us with other organizations, also use their quilts in a myriad of philanthropic ways for babies, veterans, the elderly, as fundraisers, et cetera, et cetera. And if you look at the list of organizations that utilize this once-vacant aging building, you realize that this is also a building with a heart, in that its users are comprised of people helping people. And so it's with much gratitude that I feel, and I feel I'm speaking for all the organizations who use this building, that we all appreciate the continued use of it and will go on to do good work therein.
Great. Ladies and gentlemen, the Sebastian River Art Club has just presented the city with a check for $500. I'll now read a proclamation for American Red Cross Month, March 2018. Sarah Rui. How are you? Very nice to see you.
Volunteers.
Wonderful. Hi, how are you?
Thank you.
Jeff. Jeff, very nice to meet you. This is a proclamation for American Red Cross Month, March 2018. Whereas the American Red Cross saw a record-breaking year in 2017, in just 45 days responded to back-to-back hurricanes, the deadliest week of wildfires in California history, and a horrific massacre, mass shooting in Las Vegas. And whereas in Indian River County, the Florida's coast-to-heartland chapter assisted with 107 local disasters, installed 450 smoke alarms, reached 2,084 people with fire safety information, reached 101 students and their families with preparedness information through their pillowcase project, and averages about 210 emergency military calls every year. And whereas the American Red Cross collects about 40 percent of the nation's blood supply, provides 24-hour support for military members, veterans, and their families, teaches lifesaving skills such as lifeguarding and CPR, and through its Restoring Family Links program, connects family members separated by crisis, conflict, or migration. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim March 2018 as American Red Cross Month, and encourage the citizens of Sebastian to observe this month by applauding and supporting the work of the American Red Cross.
Thank you to everyone in the City of Sebastian. I just want to remind everyone that the Red Cross relies on the generosity of donors. 95 percent of our workforce is volunteers, including the Rolf's who are here with me tonight. I'm the executive director. Because we have 95 percent of our effort done by volunteers, we're proud to say that 91 cents of every dollar raised goes directly back into programs and services. And we are working hard to be ready for hurricane season, and hope you'll all join us at our hangar party at Corporate Air on May 18th. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, it's amazing how much this community has been touched by the Red Cross over the last several years. To see them out since 2004 and the hurricanes there, and every single time we've needed them, they've been there for us, so it's an honor to have you guys here tonight. Abby Johnson. This is a proclamation for Water Conservation Month, April 2018. How are you?
Great, thank you.
Wonderful. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and whereas the state of Florida, water management districts, and the City of Sebastian are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the City of Sebastian and the state of Florida have designated April, typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, as Florida's Water Conservation Month, to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. Whereas the City of Sebastian is always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month in Sebastian, Florida, and call upon each citizen, business, and school, to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water.
Mayor Hill and fellow council members, thank you very much for having me back again this year. We're very excited to have you as partners once again. We thank you for being a model city and for reminding us all that every drop counts, but I am excited about our future. As I look out and I see our Boy Scouts here, I'll put in a shameless plug. Consider being an engineer, a hydrologist, geologist, a biologist, all these things help save water in the future. You're the folks who are going to make a change. We're in the middle of it, but the future's yours, and it's looking really bright, so thank you very much.
Naomi Charles and Allison Lisak. See? You thought I would get that wrong, chief, but I had some help. I think I still have that. Hi, how are you? Very nice to see you guys. This is a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 8th through 14th, 2018. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and when an emergency occurs that prompt response of police officers, that requires prompt response of police officers, firefighters, or paramedics, is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information transmitted from citizens who telephone the Sebastian 9/11 Communications Center. And whereas the public safety dispatchers of the Sebastian Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their jobs. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through April 14th, 2018, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Sebastian, in honor of the men and women who diligence and professionalism keep our citizens safe. You guys talk all the time. It's your jobs. All right, thank you guys so much. You're of critical importance as the link between the citizens and our officers, so I thank you very much for the service you provide this community every day. All right, we'll now have a presentation, the Fiscal Year 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Mr. Griffin.
Good evening.
Hi.
Making a presentation.
Mr. Kaufman.
Good evening.
Good evening, Tom.
Ross Kaufman, partner with Raymond, we're your independent auditors. I thought I'd do a little something different tonight, just in light of some recent events within our county, and talk just a little bit about fraud and how that interplays into the financial audit, auditor's responsibility, and the town's responsibility as well. So I thought I'd just take a minute to give you some overview, some things to look for about fraud, how it occurs, why it occurs, and how we might be able to try to prevent it going forward. I'm fortunate on my audit team to have two people that are not only CPAs, but also have a dual designation of C, I always get it backwards, yes, CFF and CFE, which means Certified in Financial Forensics and also Certified Fraud Examiners. So that's an additional education that they've received, an additional continuing education they have to receive every year. All auditors have to have a professional skepticism, and we're always required to question everything. That's why when we come in, we're always asking, do things make sense, do things add up correctly? So we're always aware of that. I thought it was interesting, there's an association of Certified Fraud Examiners that puts out an annual report, and they always talk about a fraud triangle, and there's three points to a triangle that have to be present for fraud to exist. First, it's pressure from an individual, meaning they have some sort of financial instability or something that they can't resolve in their life. Opportunity, there's opportunity where they work, that they perceive a weakness in the system that creates that opportunity. And then rationalization, meaning that they rationalize why their actions are acceptable. Perhaps somebody was passed over for a promotion, perhaps somebody didn't get the raise that they expected, or just had been somewhere for a long term and thought they deserved it. So without those three points, fraud wouldn't occur. Also, I thought it was kind of interesting, some of the statistics about fraudsters. Men are more likely to create fraud, 69 percent versus women, 31 percent. The median age is about 45 years old. The, as you would expect, 30 percent of the time it occurs in the accounting, finance, and purchasing department. And these two statistics I always find amazing. First of all, 83 percent of the employees have never been punished or fired from an organization, and 88 percent have never been charged or convicted of a crime. So when you think about just your ordinary person committing these crimes, it truly When we talk about the red flags that you would want to look for for an organization, first of all, 46 percent of the people who commit fraud are living beyond their means. 30 percent have financial difficulties, and again, this could be a one-time crisis, could be a family, a medical emergency, or something like that that creates the pressure. Unusually close to vendors is 20 percent, have excessive control, 15 percent, and they refer to as a general wheeler and dealer attitude as a 15 percent as well. The city in particular can only control one of the three triangles, and that's the opportunity. So that's why the city has a very strong and very good system of internal controls. I was kind of laughing, the check that you just received, you know, was received by one person, was handed over to the finance department, somebody else will make the deposit, somebody else will then register it in your accounting system, and then yet another person will do the bank reconciliation. I mean, you have, you have a very strong system of internal controls here at the city. And it's a broad range, you know, you don't just think about cash receipts and cash dispersments, but you have it relative to your budgeting process, cash receipts, cash dispersments, payroll, grant administration, AR collections, general ledger, and adjusting journal entries, you know, how do you make entries into your accounting system, and how do you override the system? Debt issuance, fixed asset management, and investments as well. When you talk about what are the primary weaknesses in internal controls that lead to fraud, the top one, as you can imagine, would be just a lack of internal controls. Then overriding the existing internal controls, in other words, you have somebody who has the ability to override those controls that are in place, typically maybe a manager or somebody at a senior level that has the ability to circumvent the system that's already in place, lack of management review, and poor tone at the top. The lack of management review and poor tone at the top, I can tell you, does not exist here, at least from our perspective. I mean, all the way from your city manager, all the way to the finance department down through, people want to have it done right. When we're out and asking questions and spending a couple of weeks here and then following up, you know, we always look to see, are people answering our questions? Are they telling us, we'll get back to you sometime? No, it's always, we got the answer, we'll stop what we're doing, we'll find the answer. And then, of course, does the answer make sense? And that's part of the professional skepticism. The internal controls, as we talked about, you know, is the segregation of duties, and there's really three parts of that as well, where you have the initiation of the process, the recording, and then the reconciliation. And again, your systems address all of that and try to segregate those among your accounting department the best, the best that it can. So I thought I would just kind of start with that real quick, just a little overview of fraud, how it occurs, and to let you know, part of our responsibility is to test and understand and document your internal controls. We go through those, and then we test those procedures. So in other words, you not only just tell us that you do A, B, and C, we test it to make sure you are doing A, B, and C. So as always is the case, I mean, there's never a pure system of internal controls that can always be circumvented, but they're there to prevent and eliminate that opportunity leg as much as possible. With that in mind, I'll move over to the Annual Financial Report, the reason we're here tonight. So I'm here to present the CAFR for September 30th, 2017. And just remind, it is a comprehensive annual financial report, and the city, as they have for a number of years, have chosen to voluntarily participate in the comprehensive annual reporting. Municipalities are required to present what is just called a general purpose report, but the city chooses to go into this voluntary program that has a much higher level of financial reporting and requirements. For example, like the statistical tables, the introductory section, and all of that is something that's not required by governmental accounting standards, but the city participates in a program, receives an annual certificate for excellence in financial reporting because of their, their reporting model. So I'm just going to go through just real quick what all is encompassed in here. You have a 180-page document that starts off with the introductory section. On page nine is the certificate of excellence from the prior year that you received. We would certainly expect, once these documents are submitted, to receive that same certificate for excellence in financial reporting. On page 13, you have our audit report, and that's really the only thing in this whole document that we're responsible for, is the audit report. And it is an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can give you, that says the financial statements are materially correct and presented in accordance with governmental auditing standards. Then starting on page 18, you have what's called the MDNA, Management Discussion and Analysis. And really on page 18 gives you about a 10- or 15-page overview of what happened during the year, the financial highlights and lowlights, and really summarizes and breaks down the entire financial reporting information on about a 10-page summary. So if you're looking for a high-level, executive-level summary of the financial reporting, that starts on page 18, and I think it's a, it's an excellent overview of the year that was. Starting on page 29 is the, is the financial statements, including the footnotes, and as we move through the statements, starting on page 113, this is one of those extra reportings with the CAFR, are these statistical tables. There's financial trends, revenue capacity, debt compliance capacity, demographics, and operational information. There's information in there for the past 10 years that shows some statistical information about the city, where it's been, where it's, and what's happened over the last 10 years. And then, then we get into, in the back, some additional reports that we have to issue on compliance with internal controls. And again, all of those reports are what you would expect this organization to receive. In addition to the annual comprehensive financial report, this year you guys were also subject to a single audit, and there's a separate report that was issued for that. Federally and state, if you receive more than 700, or if you spend more than $750,000 of federal funds or $750,000 of state funds, you're subject to a single audit, Single Audit Compliance Act. And really, unlike the financial audit, that's the financial statements, this is a compliance audit. You have a grant mostly from the airport that all came through the state, and that grant has several compliance aspects to it. They put on the auditor, on us, to make sure that you're in compliance with those grant requirements. So we go through and do a pretty extensive testing on the cash receipts, cash dispersments of that, making sure that the management decisions are correct, that the funds were spent for allowable expenditures, the grant will spell out specifically what it can be used for, making sure the grant was spent within their correct timeframe. So we've issued also a separate report, just called a Florida Single Audit Compliance Report. And again, this, this report is what you would expect. We went through and with all the transactions that we tested, we found no instances of non-compliance. Everything was submitted on time, met the obligations of the grant agreement, and therefore, you know, you would, you'll submit this as well, that, that you're in compliance with the grant. Now you received other funds as well, but the airport was not 85 percent of the total funds, so that's really the program, that, that grant in particular is the one that we would focus on as what's called a major program to test the compliance of that one in particular. There's a quick overview, a lot, a lot of information there. If there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and knowing the length of the, the report itself, if you're ever going through it and have questions, I'm always available to, to meet with you individually or, and review any of the information that's in the financial statements as well.
All right, thanks. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Kaufman?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much. We appreciate your good news.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we are down to the brief announcements. We have two this week. This Saturday, March 31st, is the city's annual Easter egg hunt at Riverview Park from 10:00 to noon. And April 7th, the Sebastian Craft Club show will be held in Riverview Park from 10:00 to 3:00.
All right, thank you for that. Are there any other announcements from council? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to item seven. And we will, for that, recess the city council meeting and reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Roll call, please.
Chairman Hill.
Yes, here.
Vice Chairman Kitchen.
Yes.
Mr. Dodd has asked for an excused absence tonight. Mr. Yovino.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion on item B?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of, approval of a March 14 CRA meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you, get a motion, a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, the Fiscal Year 2017 CRA Annual Report. Mr. Griffin.
This report was compiled by our Community Development Director, Lisa Frazier, and also our Administrative Services Director, Ken Kilgore, and I will turn the specifics over to Lisa for the report.
Thank you. In accordance with the Florida statute, a report, an annual report, should be submitted by March of every single year. This is a compilation of what the CRA has accomplished in the past years, but as well as this year, and we recommend approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the Fiscal Year 2017 CRA Annual Report.
Second.
A motion, a second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? All right, seeing on any discussion by council? Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Kitchen.
Yes.
Mr. Yovino.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Chairman Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item D, Award Work Authorization Number One. Mr. Griffin.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remind council that Redevelopment Management Associates, RMA, is a CCNA-approved consultant engineer, and I'll turn the specifics over to Lisa for her report.
Thank you, sir. And as, as you have in front of you, we have proposed a, a contract for RMA to perform our CRA master plan update. We'd like to begin fairly quickly, since it takes about four to six months to compile a, a good update, and we're ready to get going, so we recommend approval of the CSA. Thank you.
I make a motion, we award work authorization number one.
I'll second it.
Motion, a second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on item D? All right, seeing none. Any further discussion, council? Questions of staff? All right, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Yovino.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Chairman Hill.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kitchen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, item 70, we're going to consider and discuss and direct staff on the possibilities for the property we purchased down at the Main Street Boat Ramp area. Mr. Griffin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the agency, pardon me. Last Thursday, the 15th of March, we closed on the property, Ru Sullivan's property, 1215 Indian River Drive. We took steps immediately after to secure the property and put the police department on notice to step up patrols, things like that, and we secured it as best we could. Like to, brought this forward tonight to start the discussion on maybe the possibilities of the, of the, for the property. Ms. Frazier, Dory Bosworth, and Community Development, myself, we've been in, in talks about what, what would be the wish list for them and the CRA to get going down there. One of the things that is number one on the list is to make sure that we secure the property on the east side of Indian River Drive. That, after all, was, I think, the main driver of council wanting to go after the property. So we would recommend that, first off, that we do a unity of title, and that would join the property that the city owns on the north side, the Main Street Boat Ramp area, and we would, we would join those two properties together, and then perhaps maybe a restrictive covenant there to make sure that that remains open space, for example, something like that, it's up for discussion. And then, talking about the west side, that is, I had gone and just, just to put a feeler out there to see what demolition costs would be on the property, if that's the way the council would go. I think that I had voiced that before, that was somewhere around $16,000. That was just one opener. Of course, you remember from the, the environmental report that we got on that property, that they discovered asbestos in the tile through that, through those buildings, and that would be about a $10,000 demo on that. But I'd like to throw that out, everything out to council to start the discussion and see what council's wishes are.
Great. I'll go ahead and start, if that's all right, council. I think that that purchase that we made down there I think that that purchase that we made down there is really something that's wonderful for the future, Sebastian. And I specifically believe that the east side property is critical to be maintained along that riverfront. The property on the west side, I think there's a lot of different things we can do with it. I could see selling it, putting it on the market and getting it back on the tax rolls, getting some of the money back. I could see making it a park. I could see a whole bunch of different ideas there. And I would actually love to hear from the public on those ideas in the form of a workshop so we could get some ideas on that. I do believe that going forward and making sure that the east side is locked in is critical. And I do believe that demolishing that building is critical as well. That building is not serving a purpose, and it never will serve a purpose again. So any future, if we decide to sell it, we're going to have to either get less for it or demolish it. If we're going to make it a park, we're going to have to demolish it. If we're going to make it a parking lot, and that's not what I'm suggesting, people. So easy on the Facebook out there. So I'm not suggesting that we make it a park, parking lot. But whatever it is we do, I think we should get input from the public. But I think that, just from my standpoint, two things. We secure the east side and get that building demolished, and go forward and get input from the public. Now, I'm open to any input from council as well.
Well, I agree with you with the east side and with Mr. Griffin's recommendation that we do the unity of title and put some kind of deed restrictions or something on it so that it can't never be built on. But as far as the east side, I'm not sure I want to, right now, demolish those buildings. I mean, we could put it up for sale for six months and see what happens, and then if we don't get any bites, we can think about demolishing the buildings and try it again and see what happens.
Mr. Partland?
I'm in the same view, you know, see what we can get on there. I mean, we're not in any rush. I mean, the east side of the property, the unity of title, we want to get done. But on the west side, we have some time as to what we want to do, as well as you talked about a workshop with the public and see what they want to do as well.
The only question, I guess, would be in that is the demolishing of the building. So you would like to hold off on that?
Hold off.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Yovino?
I concur.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think Ms. Frazier has something to add on that. You know, we just went through this decision on the work authorization for the CRA master plan. I mean, we might be able to parlay that into some sort of public workshop, depending on what.
That's great.
There you go.
That's a great idea.
And that's absolutely correct. You know, typically, in any type of CRA master plan, they will look at an area as a catalyst area, and we could recommend that portion of our downtown, including the hotel, and I know that there's adjacent properties that are for sale also, and get their thoughts on what would make the most sense. RMA is a very well-known marketing and economic redevelopment firm, and that's why we chose them. So perhaps we could use that as a trigger.
That's a wonderful idea.
I think, yeah, that is a very good idea.
I would have a question for staff on the building itself. Making sure we keep it secure, making sure it doesn't become an eyesore along the riverfront, a hazard to the community. We don't want it to become a place where folks may go and sleep at night, and we certainly don't want it to be a rat-infested house. So if we're going to have that building sit vacant for several months, do you anticipate any of those things being an issue going forward?
Yes. Yes and no. I think we can do the best we can security-wise, but we can't be there 24/7, obviously. I'm worried about the contents and getting stuff removed. And I think council ought to give me, I would ask for authorization to start doing that just to take away, just to take away the, what people might think of doing there. So if that makes sense, I would ask that I be authorized to get rid of the contents. Keeping the building there, I think, is probably, for now, for the short term, a good idea to get a proper look at this, as it comes into play with the CRA master plan. But frankly, I am worried about the contents, and they're probably a temptation. So I think, I highly recommend that we do something about that.
Did that make sense? Basically, you're talking about getting everything out of there.
Yes, sir.
Beds and, what do they have in there? Cooking up ribbons and beds and...
Is anything of any value in there?
Microwaves and all kinds of stuff.
Not really. Well, not to let the cat out of the bag, but there's furniture in there. There's refrigerators in there. So, yes.
Is any of it donateable? Probably not.
Probably some of it, but I'm a bad judge of that. So it would be, it would be tough to, I don't want to go through some big evolution. Takes a lot of time, staff time. Not that we're worried about work, but it just seems like, I don't think we ought to get in the used furniture business. That's not what we do.
I would say more like Habitat for Humanity, their home reclaim center down in Vero. You can call them up, and they'll come and get out of there.
I don't know, I don't know if...
If it's applicable.
It's all serviceable or not.
Okay.
So if council would like me to, we'll get started on that, checking that out. If council gives me authorization, I can at least get rid of the contents of the building.
Well, I do like what council member Yovino is saying. Those individuals will come up and get it, but there are some legal issues with that through the dispersment of government property that could become a problem, where if we were to, I think that we could, as a council's direct, to see if it's possible, working with the city attorney, to see if it's possible to disperse those funds in that manner, or not funds, but the contents of that building, rather than taking it to a landfill, because that's the only other option that we're talking about. It's either going to a landfill, and this stuff could be working fairly good stuff.
Well, the process is, council has to declare it as surplus property. And if council declares it surplus property, we can dispose of it. If that means a gratuitous transfer to a charity or something like that, we can see to that, but...
Could we maybe get a member of the Red Cross that was just here tonight to go in there and look around and see if there's anything in there that they think is usable for their organization? And then we can make a decision on whether or not we can surplus it and give it to them, because they're always looking for furniture for people who have fires and things like that. Temporary furniture, anyway.
Yeah, I think, you know what? It sounds like we're asking the city manager to see if those things are possible, and we could probably go ahead and give the direction. If, in fact, it is possible to...
Do it.
Surplus it.
Surplus it and go forward and have someone come and remove that, then that seems like that's a consensus of council. I don't know. But if it's not, then give them the authorization to go ahead and remove it either way. Right. Does that help at all?
I would just like to maybe have the authorization to make the decision on the fly that if we, rather than have to bring it back and get council approval, although we can do it, I mean, our next meeting at April eleventh, I can do that. That would give me about a week or so. We have a busy week next week, obviously, and, but it would give me about a week to try to solidify some sort of decision for council and...
I'd like some input from the city attorney on this. Your thoughts on this?
Well, I mean, there's a couple of issues. I mean, what the manager said is right. If council possesses the authority to surplus any equipment or anything that is an asset of the city, so you could, and you can delegate that authority. So you could tell him right now, either get it donated or get rid of it. I mean, you could finish this up right now if you wanted to.
Let's do that.
There are, with donating things, there are some pitfalls. Generally speaking, if you and I go and drop stuff off at a thrift store or Goodwill or whatever, we walk away and we're done. Being a municipality, you know, there's always the concern if something that's given away, if it's not done through a reputable company or it's not done properly, that there could be some residual liability. There are things that aren't supposed to stay in the stream of commerce. I found that out when I tried to get rid of all of my son's old car seats. My wife's like, no, you can't do that. You know, you can't, you can't secondhand car seats because of all the regulations wrapped up with them and the safety standards and everything. So we would have to look into that, not knowing, of course, what's in there. But if, say, there's an old refrigerator there with an old latch-style handle, I mean, you can't have those anymore, you know? So we certainly wouldn't want to let that go on a truck off to someplace where it could be a hazard. So, you know, my recommendation is to give the manager that latitude. Obviously, he knows what is, what would be problem areas, and I would be available to him if we needed to go through this. But if we get in there and see that it's all junk with very little value, it's probably going to just be best to haul it away.
Yeah, I agree. We don't want to, we don't want to complicate the issue too much.
Correct.
Just if there's something that we can do, then. So are you looking for a motion in that regard? We'll have to give a motion to provide you with that authority. So does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
That we give him the ability to move forward with it and decide whether or not it's going to be donateable or garbage.
Okay. And in that motion, could you have the...
You have to specify, doesn't he have to specify it surplus?
The unity of title of the property to the east of...
Right.
And does that make everyone happy?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Greason and my wife, Rhona. We own the property adjacent to this property, twelve oh six, twelve oh eight, and twelve ten U.S. Highway One. We share the common boundary. Our property is to the west of the Harbor Lights Motel. This is a little bit involved. I try to keep it short as I can. We have a four-inch Artesian well on our property that dates back to 1930. In 1943, there was an easement granted to Harbor Lights for a one-inch water line to provide them with water. In return, they would send treated water back for the occupants. I had an agreement with Ruth Sullivan that she would be responsible for any and all maintenance on that well. When she put her property up for sale, we could see the writing on the wall that that agreement, that water was not going to be available to us, the property was going to be demolished, or plus, I feared for the quality of the water that was coming out of there. So we went and brought in county water. Hence, I have, we have no need for the water. It is a seventy- to eighty-year-old well, and St. John's Water Management estimates the lifespan of about fifty years. So we're sixty to seventy percent beyond its lifespan. It possesses, it possesses a real safety liability. When a flow well goes, I've experienced a six-inch flow well, and the flow can be, on the six-inch, was up to two thousand, excuse me, two thousand gallons a minute. So the damage that can come from that can be extensive. I had a conversation with Mr. Griffin when I found out the property was up for sale, and made him aware of the arrangement, and he agreed conclusively that we need to cap the well. St. John's has a program to cap the well, which is a $10,000 to $20,000 project, and they offered to do it for nothing. We are in the queue to have that done, based on the conversation that we had, that, per an email, that would be done at or prior, prior to or at closing, they would, the city would grant me a release of easement so that we could cap the well. In conversation recently, it seems to not be the consensus of staff. Now they want to continue access to the water for demo. Now we're talking about demolition being six or eight months off. Takes me out of the queue for St. John's, and it still presents the same risk and danger. If that well should fail, Harbor Lights, Indian River Drive, and the waterfront could be at risk. So what I'm asking is, you have the Chamber of Commerce right next door, they have water. I'm asking that you grant us the easement, or the release of easement, so we can cap that well. You have water at the Chamber of Commerce, you have a fire hydrant across the street.
You've got about one minute left. I just want to let you know to wrap. You've got about one minute left.
Okay. That's our point. We're asking that you grant us the release of easement, as was indicated you would do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes. I agree with him.
Okay. So get with staff in the morning, right?
The, if we needed water for the demo, they could tap into a fire hydrant and use that, and the demo company would pay that cost of using that water. So it's not critical. We would be able to get the water. So, yes, sir.
That does not require council action.
That's correct.
So get with, just get with staff tomorrow, and they will move towards that conclusion. Okay, yes, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Damian Gilliams, sixteen twenty-three U.S. One. The property that we're discussing this evening, we don't need any liabilities. Let's just declare it as surplus furniture, get rid of it, have them sign a release, knock the building down. Let's just cut to the chase. We're going to need plenty of more parking down there by our boat ramp. Thanks to the two thousand more residents that you annexed into the community at the last meeting, the seven hundred acres, we're going to need more parking down there. Actually, maybe you should put the word out to the community that the cities in the business are buying up everything on Indian River Drive, because we're going to need it. We need to have a five, ten, fifteen, twenty-year plan, because just think about those two thousand residents. They're going to come down to Indian River Drive, and they're going to need parking. When you do your fireworks down there, Mr. Mayor, they're going to need parking. The Chamber of Commerce, when they do their big fundraisers, they're going to need parking. Their fishing village, their fishing waterfront, they're going to need parking. Let's just direct the engineers to lay out a site plan. We need parking. And put the word out in your budget for next year that we need to allocate more money for parking, because we are a working waterfront community, and we need parking down there. So we have over 22,000 residents in the community. I don't know what the last census called for. And it's going to get bigger, because we're going to annex more, and we're going to need more parking. Get the message, Mr. Mayor? We're going to need more parking. Plenty more parking. Did you see that last shrimp festival we had down there at the park? All that parking on U.S. One? I want you to just picture this now. Think about this. All those people parking on U.S. Highway One? You heard it here first. There will be an accident on U.S. Highway One, somebody driving along, and they're parked on U.S. One, and there'll be a killing. I hate to say it, Mr. Mayor, because we did not plan properly for all the annexations that you're bringing into our community.
Sir.
We, I got five minutes, right?
You do have five minutes. You have five minutes, but let's stay on target here. We're talking about...
I'm talking about that piece of property and parking.
Sir, wait a second while I'm speaking, okay? Because two people can't talk at the same time. That's the opposite of order. All right, so order requires one person speak at a time. The issue that we're discussing is the issue along the riverfront, that lot, and what the city is going to do going forward. We also have, if you've listened to this meeting, discussed the fact that we're planning on getting input from the public as to what we should do to this. So you may continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
So... put it in the budget, and we overpaid, by the time we cleared the building, get rid of all the trash, we're gonna be in excess of two hundred thousand worth of the appraised value, let's just, if we're going to do parking, and we're going to acquire property on Indian River Drive for the future of our community, let's just go ahead and do it correctly, so that we don't make the same mistake of overpaying price per square foot, or price per acre, let's just let the community know that we're in the business of doing acquisitions down there, so that we can get the best price for the taxpayers. On that particular piece of property, we overpaid, and that was my point, for parking, we don't need to think about selling it, it's real clear, it's dry, we need parking, this is a no-brainer, so, let's knock the building down right away, oh, we don't have a city engineer, so we can't do our own site plan, we're gonna have to contract that out, right, Mr. Mayor?
You have thirty seconds.
Okay, so, we'll have to contract that out to do a site plan and do the drainage, and if we get our ducts in a row, maybe we can get some grant money from the state, and they'll match it, and we can buy more parking, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Giliums, clearly you want it to be a parking lot, I appreciate that. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this issue? Yes, sir.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Ben Hocker, Sebastian.
Yes, sir, good evening.
Mayor, you mentioned having a workshop, one, I don't understand why the city is in the real estate business, thinking of even selling it, we've purchased a piece of property, high price, low price, it's immaterial, we have a piece of property, we're now looking at another piece that's over where we have our maintenance facility moving to the airport, there was talk of selling that, I don't think any of it should be sold, the gentleman before me said, parking, we clear out the working area for our, on the triangle, that can be major parking with a decorative, oh, some trees and what have you, coming into the city, I believe that we really should put our heads together, look at the property, do, as you said, a workshop, don't make any hasty decisions, and I can't figure out what to do with it, but, we could leave it as a pocket park for a short period of time. Now, we bought the property just for one reason, to get the property that was on the east side, we could have done some modification there, looked at the property, is it even buildable? Would have been blocked off, and I looked at other properties going up the river, they're so small on the river, you couldn't even put a tent on them, so, I don't know what area, whether that was actually even through planning and zoning, a buildable piece of property, but we own it now, you're right, tie it to the park, cut it off, but, I don't think selling a piece of property along the waterfront is, if benefits to anybody in the city here, we're gonna get a couple dollars, less than we bought it for, no, I wouldn't be in real estate doing it that way, buy high, sell low, my broker told me that, I needed a tax loss, right, it don't work. Again, a pocket park temporarily, you're right, get rid of the building there, there are scrap guys all over the place, put a little bid out, they'll come in and scrap refrigerators and everything else, believe me, and you won't pay to take it away, they'll take it away gladly. Uh, that's about it, I, I think you ought to really look at a workshop, somehow we found seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in the CRA budget, well, we don't have it in there, I don't know how it got there, how it shifted around, but, we're now with a piece of property, let's really look at what we can do with it, maybe a pavilion, something, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir, anyone else from the public wish to speak on this? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Robert Nilson, um, this, this is regarding the sewer system down there, is this an appropriate time to...
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
There, we will be, there's an item, an agenda item on the agenda that's public, uh, that's item thirteen.
Do I need to wait then?
Thank you. Yeah, wait until public input.
Okay.
Which is item thirteen.
Only regarding that property, my misunderstanding, thank you.
Yes, sir, no problem, no problem. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this? All right, seeing none, council, uh, we've got a motion in a second, we're discussing that motion in a second, includes going ahead and doing pretty much what everybody said we should do on the property, except make it a parking lot, but to go ahead and have, uh, the staff go forward, make it part of the CRA master planning process, and that will bring bodies in, so that the public can let us know what they're wanting on this, is that about right?
And the unity of title.
And the unity of title, yes, sir. Roll call, please.
Mr. E. Vino?
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin?
Yes.
Chairman Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you all, we'll now adjourn the CRA and reconvene to the City Council meeting. Council, this is up to item nine, the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
One second, I'd like to pull item B.
Anyone else want to pull something out?
I move approval of item number nine A, C, D, and E.
I'll second that, roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember E. Vino?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Well, Ms. Vice Mayor, consent agenda, item A, uh, B, rather, go ahead.
Just have, uh, some comments, um, nothing against Ryman, because they do great jobs on our audits, but, you know, this is like the second extension, and this is putting them into their seventh year, seventh and eighth year, so, when this extension is over, I think it's time that we go out for a formal rebid, uh, and see what, you know, what, what comes back, and I'm sure Ryman will probably bid on that as well, and could very well come back at the end of this extension, that's my, my information, I don't know how the rest of you feel.
Okay, yeah, well, I'm, I'm very comfortable with the, the service and the product that we've gotten, uh, and I'm comfortable with, uh, item nine B, if you'd like to make a motion on that, but your comments are, are definitely heard.
Okay, I move approval of IMB.
Second, motion in a second, roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember E. Vino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you, does anyone have any, uh, reports, uh, from committees? All right, uh, they don't have any public hearings?
I have, I have a committee report, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, that's outstanding.
You're going too fast for me.
Madam Vice Mayor, go ahead.
At the Economic Development Committee meeting this month, the, uh, school board gave a presentation, asking the committee members to write letters of support to the governor for grant monies that they have applied for, for phase two of their, uh, technical adult education center, that they're in the process of, uh, moving and relocating and remodeling, so I would like the council to authorize the city manager to do that, in favor of the school board's grant money request.
Any objection? You have a consensus?
Sounds good to me.
Yes, sir, I'll compose a letter and have it ready for your signature, um, I'll let you know probably tomorrow afternoon, if that's okay.
All right, that's fine, thank you very much, anything else?
Nope.
All right, thank you. This is on Fish Business, uh, item A, award agreement to ADS Security in the amount of seventy-six thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars, Mr. Griffin?
Um, I'm gonna, uh, let Scott make the presentation on this this evening.
Uh, good evening, uh, this camera system, the security camera systems at the airport is well outdated and problematic in terms of its performance, and, and, and working with the police security officer, the, the airport security officer, and the police department, we've been looking into, uh, updating this equipment with more modern, um, with more modern capabilities, the, um, we put the matter out to bid on, excuse me, on February the first, uh, the, a local company, West Melbourne, ADS Security, was the apparent low bidder, and came in at seventy-six thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars, uh, subsequent to that, we applied to the, pardon me, to the FDOT for a JPA grant, and they were happy to do that, uh, so we have an eighty-thousand-dollar grant, based on an eighty-twenty participation, so, the, the city's, uh, the city's share of that is sixteen thousand dollars, so, we're looking for council to approve, um, uh, to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with ADS Security to, to do that work.
All right, very good, council, what's your pleasure?
I move approval of item twelve A.
Second.
Motion in a second, anyone from the public wish to speak on item twelve A? All right, seeing none, any discussion from council or questions? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember E. Vino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, it was just the item twelve B, uh, set a public date for, uh, stormwater utility fee, uh, Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir, um, a few meetings ago, we had a presentation from, uh, DMC Engineering from Fort Pierce, and that concerned the, uh, Earth Embankment Project that we let last October for the, to study the city's south, uh, stormwater canal system. After that underwhelming presentation, I think we are all in agreement that, uh, council and staff wanted, uh, us to take another, another look at some of our stormwater requirements for the next couple of years. I took a closer look at the, uh, report that we had from, uh, Hoyle Tanner concerning our seawall system on the, uh, the south canal system, and, uh, after reading it a couple more times, I became more in agreement with what that report said, and, um, that kind of gave the impetus to take a look at some of our other stormwater requirements in, uh, right now, and also years to come for the city. So I became more convinced that, that, uh, we are going to have some stiff liabilities moving forward, stormwater-wise, as council knows, last December, I recommended, council approved, us sequestering that, uh, stormwater division, it's its own standalone department right now, uh, they concentrate just on, uh, stormwater, but frankly, there are some big landmines out there that we're gonna be facing in the next couple of years. Let me just go down this list that, uh, that I, I put in your, uh, my agenda transmittal in your agenda packet. Number one, Elcom, George, Schuman, Seawall Repair and/or Replace, uh, the, a report that Hoyle Tanner came up with was around sixteen million dollars, and that was about two years ago, two and a half years ago, when they, when they filed that report. The Stonecrop Culvert, um, issue, I know that Vice Mayor Kinshe knows about this, this has been, this has been on our radar for a number of years, we went and put that at the top of our list for local mitigation strategy money, fallout money from Hurricane, um, Matthew, from FEMA, if, uh, there was gonna be any money left over, and that was our number one priority. As it turns out, it doesn't look like that's going to happen, but, the project's still there, the need is still there, we still have to do something about that. And as I go down the list, Ocean Cove, Day Drive, there's a big retention, water retention area in, in Day Drive that has not been worked on in probably thirty or forty years, which has to be redone, Pelican Island Place, uh, council remembers, uh, probably about four or five months ago, two gentlemen came here from Pelican Island Place, and that area between Douglas and Day Drive consistently, uh, has, uh, severe street flooding during heavy rain periods, and we all know what, what that causes, that street flooding causes deterioration in the base of the streets, once we lose the streets, then we get into another financial issue, where we then have to rebuild the streets. Also, there's a need in our maintenance, our stormwater maintenance division to add some more individuals, and I am recommending that, uh, in the next budget, I won't be here for the next budget, but I am highly recommending that we look for five additional maintenance workers, along with one engineering tech, we have one, we have one person who covers the whole city with regard to, uh, doing elevations, things like that, setting pipe elevations, so we can get proper flow, we really need somebody else to, uh, help that person take up the slack. So if you add all that together, all those numbers together, comes out to roughly nineteen million dollars. That's a huge amount of money for this budget. Our stormwater fee brings in approximately one-point-one million dollars per year, there's some transfers, there's some equipment that we buy, uh, but round, round numbers, right about a million dollars a year. And I submit to you that, uh, I really don't think that, that we get everything done that we should, because we still have stormwater, uh, issues in certain pockets of the city, it's never gonna be perfect, I understand that, but, uh, I think we can do better. And frankly, uh, I know that, uh, I'm on my way out the door, but this has been a, a huge challenge for me, uh, for the time I've been in this chair, uh, I don't know that I've put a positive dent in it, uh, I think I've put a little bit of a dent in it, but, I would like to see the next city manager be in a position where they could be better able to take on these issues. I am proposing a doubling of the stormwater fee, stormwater fee right now is five dollars, I am proposing doubling it to ten dollars, ten dollars a month, a hundred and twenty dollars a year. What would be the process that we would have to go through, the council would have to go through to do that? It's a public hearing, it's a public hearing process, we would also, and if I get council approval tonight to have that public hearing, that is what I'm asking for, but if I get that approval, we will have to go through the administrative gymnastics of, of getting notices sent out to every residential and commercial unit in the city, there's a cost associated with that, it's going to be approximately fourteen to fifteen thousand dollars that would come out of the stormwater fund, and then, uh, every residential unit and commercial unit would have, uh, Ms. Jeanette, is it twenty days, they have to have that notice twenty days before the public hearing, twenty days in their hand before the public hearing would take place. Considering all that, the timing involved, that public hearing will be set for, uh, the ninth of May. So, I am asking that, uh, council act favorably on this, and set that public hearing for the ninth of May.
All right, um, thank you, sir, and, and I can tell you right now that I understand your desire to get this locked down, um, especially at this late date, but I have some serious concerns about, about this going forward, um, and I can start right by looking at the list where we have, you know, sixteen million dollars for Elcom, George, Schuman, Seawall, Replace, Repair, and at the last meeting, we just fired a guy that's trying, the, uh, not a guy, a firm, we relieved them of their duty, which was to come up with a plan of attack, and give us some options on how we should get after repairing those walls, whether it be a piecemeal situation, whether it be, uh, sections of it at a time, whether it be the whole thing in one big shebang, because we fired that firm, we, that doesn't necessarily mean that we just decided that we're gonna drop sixteen mil on it and replace the walls, this council hasn't determined that, that it's gonna be a sixteen-million-dollar project, we haven't even had any discussions on it, quite frankly, now, we do have a report, uh, that, that's a few years old, and I believe we need to move in a direction where we come up with a plan for this, and we need to not kick it down the road, but I certainly don't want to, it's, it's, it's kind of a strange time, I mean, there may be a new city manager sitting here in a month, and, and so, a decision of this magnitude, and it is a huge decision to double, to double, the, the stormwater utility fee is a huge decision, and it's, that's five dollars per CEU, is that CEU, is it, right?
ERU.
ERU, I'm sorry, CEU is a continuing, I don't know, see, as you see, I need more CEUs, so it's five dollars per ERU, um, so, properties, and typically a quarter-acre property with a house on it, and a, and a driveway's gonna be one CEU, that's how it was all determined, but there, there's other issues here that are really, really big, because if we're gonna do the, the Elcom walls, which we're ultimately gonna have to do, we have to have discussion on how we're gonna pay... we have to have discussion on how we're going to pay for it. And I know this is part of that, but many would say that as the property directly adjacent to the Elcom will receive direct financial benefit through the replacement of a wall, which would increase their property value greater than the person three blocks away, there should potentially be assessments. Now, that would be something that would have to be discussed. Again, I'm not saying we should have assessments, but that's something that is, is quite often done. Am I not mistaken? And so we haven't discussed assessments. Now, understanding also that, that the project is going to benefit every single person in the city limits. So there will be some benefits, so there would be costs associated with, for everyone. Then we have this situation where we have private communities. Private communities for the last 20 years have had to maintain and treat all, 100% of their stormwater. So they're already treating the stormwater. Are they going to have to pay the, the additional 100% on the, the, the stormwater utility? My guess is if we just go forward, the answer would be yes. And so that would concern me also. They're already paying to, to maintain and treat their water. Who's going to pay for it? We are, we, we don't even know if we're going to piecemeal this. And we, we had discussions about doing it one section at a time with an earth embank, an earth embankment or a new wall with winds. And it's just like, there's so much that we haven't discussed on this issue that we're not even close to being able to have a meeting about doubling the stormwater utility fee to pay for something we don't know what we're going to deal with. Now, that's not to say we don't have problems that we need to, to, to tackle. And I suggest that the new city manager be tasked with these issues as the fore of his responsibility. But I think for us to make this decision just one week prior to interviewing a new city manager, I think is really, really, really cart before horse. These issues have been there for many years. They're not going, you know, tapping the brakes on this and saying, let's get the input. And it's all due respect, Mr. Griffin. And I, I just want you to know that I believe in you as a city manager, and you've done a great job. But the problem that we have with this issue is that we don't know what we're doing. And we still want to double the utility. And that is something that very much concerns me, so.
I just want to comment on one item that you talked about, the private subdivisions. There are maintenance credits, stormwater credits allowable for those people who are fully maintaining their stormwater systems and can prove that they've done that maintenance on a yearly basis. So they, they are getting a break on that in the private developments. They're not paying the full amount. But after 30 years of listening to drainage complaints, I'm ready to say, let's get this going, but we've got to pay for it somehow. I know we have a lot of, have to talk about how we're going to do or the, the seawalls. But these other projects, the Stonecrop, the Ocean Cove, the Day Drive, those have been there forever, for the last 30 years that I've worked for the city. So they have to be paid for some way, somehow. So, you know, even if you don't do the seawalls right away, you still have to pay for the other projects.
I'd, I'd like to move this ahead and set the public hearing. We're talking about doubling it. That doesn't mean it would be doubled. And any new city manager comes in, they don't want to tackle this issue. Mr. Griffin has stepped forward. He wants to try and get this done. He's talked about this for years and have this done before he leaves and a new city manager comes in. So I, I move approval to go forward with item 12B.
Second?
Motion second. Mr. Evanio. Even, Evino.
I actually have a lot of concerns. I mean, and I'm, I'm not just talking about the seawalls and storm drainage, which clearly has been an issue in the 15 years that I've been in the city as well. We've got a whole other pressing issues coming forthwith with ad valorem taxes, the homestead exemption increasing, more SROs in the schools. I mean, we've got a lot of stuff happening. As far as moving forward with the workshop to decide whether or not we're going to double the fee, I'm not opposed to talking about it, moving forward with the workshop. I don't know if I'm pro doubling it without hearing what the public has to say about it, what they want. So I, I would be pro moving forward with it, I think.
All right, let's get some input from the public on this. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this issue? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Damian Gilliams. Thank you, Joe Griffin. Thank you for taking a leadership role in our community and identifying a problem that we've been having for many, many years. This project's already been started, Mr. Mayor. Let us not forget about the canal walls that were already fixed on the north side of 512. Let us not forget that this has been coming to a head. We have liability out there. There's no time to be utilizing a new city manager to delay this any further for further excuses. It's called planning, okay? So we missed the opportunity with Senator Negron, who was the president of the Senate, to get special help through the legislation by getting grant money to accommodate this because we're not shovel-ready. We don't have plans ready. So we can't present anything to St. John's Water Management to say, we're ready to do something and we'd like to you to share in this big project, this $19 million project. Linda, I commend you. I commend you, Mr. McPartland. I know that Mr. Avino is new. This has been going off for a while. But our community is at risk with a 100-year flood plan. We need to start putting money aside in the bank. We need to go ahead and raise the utility fees so that everybody in the community knows it's to protect their property, not just the ones that are on the forefront of the canals where their homes are, but the ones that are two or three blocks away. It's going to affect everybody. So if we start this extra $5 per piece of property in the community and we stash it aside and we put it strictly for this project, and I'm talking about the attorney and you guys do a, an ordinance or a, a resolution that says that whatever money that we raise the taxes on, the $5, whatever it is that we're doubling, this is going to address an issue that's been paralyzing this community for quite a while. And we might as well get a jump on it now. So let's put the money aside. Let's build the account up. Let's get the engineers in place. Let's start laying out the plans, whether it's phase one, two, three, or four. If it's a $20 million project, we do $5 million at a time. I think the last project was $6 million. But let's have a plan. Let's start eating the elephant one bite at a time because that's how you eat an elephant, one bite at a time. Don't be afraid. You'll be commended in the end, 20 years from now, if we do get that big storm. It's needed. General Development developed this area 40, 50 years ago. They knew what they were doing when they put those canals in. Those canals are drainage for everybody, all 22,000 people that live in this community, whatever the amount of lots are. So let's just, Joe, I know you're leaving, but this takes a lot for you to bring this forward because I know in your heart, you know it's a liability and we need to deal with it. And, and the city manager that comes on needs to know that we mean business. And this is something we're going to deal with. We're going to deal with it now. So by putting it off and saying, well, let's wait, that's kicking the can down the road, Mr. Mayor. We cannot do that. There's been talk of litigation already with homeowners. We don't need problems. What we need is solutions. And I think we have solutions. I think Joe made a great idea. That's what the utility assessment is for, for the drainage of this community. It's not like you're, you're doing something you shouldn't. But, but let's tie this $5 to dealing with, if we're going to finance $20 million, it's going to go pay debt service to get this job done. Let's not play games and then come to us later on and say, well, we need another $5, or we need another $5. Let's get our numbers in order. Let's get our plans in order. And let's, let's get this on the drawing board. Let's help the taxpayers of this community so that we don't have to constantly be redoing our road bases, right, Linda? You've been talking about this for a while. You've been in the engineering department. And it's going to cost us more money to redo those road bases and repave these roads. So, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir.
Please, show us leadership tonight, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Don't be afraid. It won't bite you.
Thank you, sir. Good.
Evening, Ben Hocke, City of Sebastian. I get a tax bill. You're going ahead now and making a decision to double a fee. Would this not come under the millage rate? And the, why not? I ask. You're telling me I'm paying $5 out of my pocket now?
Do you want me to answer the question?
Yeah, go ahead.
You are paying $5. If, if you get, if you get a receipt, it comes in as a separate item under the stormwater utility. You're paying a stormwater utility fee, which is going to be around the $5 per month mark. And it's on your trim notice.
Yes, but...
It's not under your millage rate. Your millage rate is...
It's still in my tax. You're going to turn around now and double the tax on me?
That $5.
And you're just making a decision tonight to double tax on the people?
No, we're just making it...
Well, not tonight, but whenever. And I'll go back to my original statement. On that canal you're talking about, if the bulkhead is on the property owner's property, it is not the city's responsibility. And we had that discussion many times before. And then we found bulkheads that were catty-corner, some on and some on the city property and some on the resident property. We were talking about scraping the bank in front of the house if the bulkhead was falling down, still involving money. Where's St. John's kicking in money here? What do they do? Just tell us, you got to do this and walk away from it? It's a pretty big organization. They take care of a total sector of the county. And I don't hear anybody saying, we went to them to figure out what we have to do to get a couple bucks out of them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the community wish to speak on this issue? All right, seeing none.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just for the record, I've been to St. John's. I've talked to St. John's about this. We'd be eligible for grants. What I would envision, if this would be a, a $20 million project, because, you know, these things tend to get inflated. I'm talking about seawalls. That would be $20 million over 10 years to be phased. That would be $1 million a year from the city for 10 years, so.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Counsel, any questions or discussions?
No, the only thing we're approving tonight is to set a public hearing, so to get the public's input, so.
Okay.
I have no problem with that.
All right, very good. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Evino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
No.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, counsel. That leads us up to item 13, public input. Anyone from the public wish to speak tonight on something not on our agenda?
He's been waiting patiently.
Yeah. Now is your turn.
Thank you. This, this regards the gravity flow sewer system that the Indian River Utilities is installing in the waterfront area where, where, where I live. My understanding is that there's a $15,000 grant available to offset the costs that are incurred by a homeowner such as myself to remove an existing and functioning septic tank and hook up to the sewer line provided by the utility company. My property has been assessed just under $15,000 to offset the cost of this new system coming through. And we live in a, a small house on a big lot, so this is a lot of money to us. I also understand if, if I had removed my tank prior to this, this might just sound like a gripe, but there's, there's some sense to it. Before these gravity flow lines came through, the cost to hook up would have been a lot greater because I would have had to put in a pump station and such. But pretty much all of those costs would have been absorbed by the grants. And now that the gravity lines are there, approximately 10,000 worth of that cost will not re- be reimbursed to me through the grant because it's being paid out of our pockets as an assessment. And I find that disappointing, to say the least. Because, well, I have a question when I'm done here, too. But I, I think it would be a great deal more of an incentive for me to go ahead. The idea behind this, from my understanding of the grant money, is to get people to hook up to the system and not risk the runoff of, you know, sewer and such into the, into the Indian River Lagoon. And I think it would be a great deal more of incentive if the grant money were made available to offset the costs of the assessment as well. I would remove my tank and hook up to the city sewer right away. But I have a functioning septic system that's working free and is essentially free to use. So I'm not, you know, I don't have a lot of incentive to, to go ahead and hook up to it. And it's disappointing that it would have been available when, it's like the, the money got transferred from being available to me because it's being paid now as an assessment. And it's become a gravity flow. The cost of hooking up has gone down about $10,000 or so is my understanding from checking with costs for lift stations and things of that nature. So I, I would like to see somebody consider making, making those funds, the grant money, available at least for the area over by the river. My, my understanding is that this was proposed to the council and the council was concerned about setting a precedent by making the assessments eligible to be repaid by grant money and if, you know, a large part of the community would expect the same treatment. But I have two points with respect to that concern. One of them is that you could limit this eligibility to properties east of US 1. Obviously, a self-serving consideration in my respect because I am east of US 1. But also, it seems reasonable because that is where, it's much closer to the Indian River Lagoon. There's less, less opportunity for any overflow or such to be filtered naturally because of the proximity to the lagoon. So it, it is a reasonable thing. And the other thing is that the grant money is going to be finite. There's only going to be so much of it. So if the money runs out at some point, then that's just a fact of life for, for the unfortunate people that may, would have, would have liked to have their assessment put off. If there's money to, no money left to do that, I'm not sure that anybody would necessarily, you know, it wouldn't be on, on, on the council's shoulders, so to speak. It's just the, there's only so much money. If the money is there, then, then make it available. If it's not, it's not. And that's my point. Thank you.
Okay.
If anybody wants to respond to what I said in case I had any errors in, you know, my understanding...
Do you have any questions? You said you had a question at the end.
Oh, I did say that, didn't I? Yes, thank you. The other thing is, earlier, earlier I heard that the businesses are eligible to reimburse, be reimbursed for their assessments, but not private individuals. And that seems highly irregular to me. I don't, I don't, if, if that is the case. I'm not sure if that's the case. I haven't gotten a, a, you know, but, but somebody mentioned that. And if it's, if, I may have heard incorrectly. So if someone can address me and set me straight on that, I'd appreciate that as well.
Thank you very much for your input. We appreciate that, sir. Could you report to CRA or have a report to CRA on that issue? If I do recall...
We had some discussions on...
We had discussion on making it available.
Yes.
And the decision was no. Is that correct?
The, first of all, what the gentleman was talking about is the money that we have in our septic sewer grant program is to take a septic system out of the, out of service and hook up to the, to the sewer system.
That's correct.
Whether it's gravity or a force main. That's number one. I don't know. He said he had three properties. The gentleman said he had three properties. I don't know if he has three septic systems. I, I forgot to ask him that. That's number one. Number two, I believe it was about a year ago, year and a half maybe, that this, this issue came before council. And Mr. Sembler brought this forward to me. I brought it to council. And the decision from council, if I remember correctly, Ms. Jeanette, maybe you can help with this, is that council did not want to use septic sewer grant money for the ass... for the assessment portion, that it was strictly for the reconnect portion. Is that correct? I think that was the decision by council, I'm pretty sure it was. So, and that was without ambiguity. I mean, council was very definitive on that, I think...
CRA, CRA actually is a board, a CRA board.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
CRA board.
I just wanted to be clear on it. So the, the county is the ones that are levying the, just to be clear on this, too, we're not the ones imposing an assessment on the property. So, okay.
Correct. That's correct.
Also, assessment fees are allowed to be paid over time with the county. It's not all one lump sum of $10,000. It, it's added to your monthly bill, your water bill.
Now, I, if, if there's a business, and, and our septic sewer grant program allows businesses to partake of this program, as, as, as do residents. So if there is a $16,000 bill for installation of, of a connection, of a decommissioning of the septic and a connection to the, to the sewer system, and part of that is an assessment fee, I'm pretty sure that we have in the past allowed that, if that's the total, if that's in the total bill. But as far as the forward paying of these assessments, which was the issue, I believe, about a year ago, paying as the assessment came due, paying that for, say, a vacant property, that's what council was concerned about, I think, about a year ago. Or, I mean, the CRA...
I, I would suggest filling out an application, seeing if you qualify. And, and so going down to the building department, that's where he would...
Community development.
Right, go to the community development department, fill out an application, work with the individuals down there, and they'll let you know if it's a qualify for the grants. All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Amy Williams. Three things I want to hit on real quick, and then I'll sit down and... First of all, I want to commend Joe Griffin and his staff for getting the fire code and fire inspections and everything under the building department with Wayne. I think that having that close to home is going to save the builders in the community money, and it's going to help the businesses of the community. So I want to, you know, that takes a lot to pull something from the county, and so I want to commend Joe for getting that done. Second thing is the CAFRA that was discussed this evening, and I was reviewing your paperwork.
Sir, I, I know very well that you know the rules.
Yeah, you should have, you didn't have public input.
Sir, you know the rules.
You didn't have public input.
Sir, I'm going to read you what public input is.
No, no, stop.
I will not stop.
Jim, you tell you're cutting it to my time.
Okay, then you're going to, then you're going to follow the rules.
It was under the consent agenda, Jim.
Sir, do not speak.
Mr. Mayor, it was under the agenda, you pulled it, and you didn't allow the public to speak.
Sir, okay. Now, you're going to allow me to speak now, right?
No, let me move on.
Okay, you will move on.
Under your agenda, if you pull something from the consent agenda and you do a motion, you have to invite the public to speak. You denied us and didn't open it to the public. I waited to speak. I'm doing it under public input now.
No, you're not. You're moving on.
Because of your negligence running the meeting, Mr. Mayor, you owe it to the community when you pull something from the consent agenda, which you did, look to the tape, you did not open it, you had a motion and a second, under that item, because the gentleman was here, correct? And you did not allow anybody to speak, because I wanted to speak under the item. So I have to speak under public input.
You will not speak on that item.
I'll wait until next meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Very good.
Okay?
Good move.
Let me, let me move on to the 182 acres, okay? I want to call you out on that, the last meeting. You had put our staff member, the community development director, on the stand, and you questioned her about 700 units versus 1,100 units. So I went ahead and followed up with Stan Boeing, the community director for the county, and I asked him, and I'm, and he sent me an email today, and I'm going to read it into the record as soon as my phone clears up here. Well, here we go. This was at 4:30 this afternoon. You had made a point that it would be better to go with the city and the voluntary annexation, and you sold a bill of goods to the council members, that it's better to go with 700 homes versus 1,100. Do you remember? Go to the tape. So I asked Stan, I said, "Is that correct? You've asked about the development of 700 units versus 1,100 units on the 182-acre annexation property. Under IRC, Indian River County's land use development designation, the property could have been density of up to six units per acre, for the 182 times six units, that's 1,100 units. But in practice, in practice, in reality, we would tend to see a planned development developed at three to four units per acre, which is 546 units, less than 700. So your argument that you sold the bill of goods, well, I'll send you a copy, I have it in writing, you sold the council members here that, "Let's go with the city, we'll get 700 units versus 1,100 units." Well, just to call you out on it, he said that, like any planned development, we had in six units per acre land use area, that planned development under the same developer, and I'm not going to mention his name, same developer, was Harmony Reserve, which is being developed at density of 3.26 acres, units per acre. That brings you under 700 units. Mr. Mayor, if you're going to quote facts and you're going to put a staff member on the stand and you're going to, first of all, she's not an engineer, and you ask her to testify, and nobody can cross-examine her to the facts and tell your sta-- your, your peers that this is a better way to go, 1,100 units versus 700, Mr. Mayor, that is misleading. I'm not going to use any nasty words tonight, I'm just going to say, "Mr. Mayor, you did not do your homework, and if you're not going to do your homework, then you should not speak on something..."
10 seconds.
"...and put your staff in a position."
10 seconds.
So, Mr. Mayor, you should resign.
Thank you.
I'm calling for your resignation. You are very misleading, you are not fair to this community.
Thank you, sir.
And you put all those people in that community in jeopardy with your bad decisions.
You can have a seat now.
And I will make that part of the record. I will send it to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Interesting that the beginning of that letter stated that, in fact, it could be up to 1,100 units at six units per acre. Who's being honest here?
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. This is early question. Indian River Drive, we hear is going to be completely rebuilt, redone. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Resurfacing?
Yes.
Is that a county road?
No, that's a ci-- it's a city road in, in the Sebastian area. It's county at the north end.
So it's our dime to do it.
That's right.
When is it scheduled, is the question I have? Because...
You can call staff and, and ask that question at any time, Mr. Hocker, and they'll give you the answer. We have a scheduled, we, we have engineering of the road.
Well, we're curious whether it's going to be in the summer or...
We have meetings that we're going to have to, that we're going to have to go through. We'll be engineering the road. It's, it's not happening this month, and if you want to have a, a date, you can get with the staff, and they'll give you that answer.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. Is that money coming out of the CRA or out of the city budget?
It's in the budget, and you can find that on the city website.
It's in the budget. Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else wish to, wish to speak this evening? All right, hearing done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
For the record, I have requ-- they are going through engineering on Indian River Drive right now, and there are some drainage issues that they have to clear up. I have given my recommendation that that project should start July 5th, after the 4th of July celebration. That's, that's the target. I ask them to try to keep.
Thank you for that. Leaves us up to new business, item 14, 14A, authorized the city manager to execute a lease addendum with National Aperture. Mr. Griffin?
I'm going to bring Scott up here, but he is filling under the weather, he's got the flu, we're just coming out of it, and he handled the previous item on the security cameras, okay, but I think I'll, I'll do this. He's up here to answer any of the technical questions.
It's a pretty at the table.
The ownership of National Aperture came to us and gave us notice that they would like to vacate the property that, that they lease out at the airport administration building. They currently lease two wings of the airport administration building. That lease comes up on September 1st. They would like an addendum to say that they would go month to month until they build a new piece of property. Just as an aside to this, I consider this the first major casualty of our airport along what we talked about a couple weeks ago with regard to the increase in flight activity from Flight Safety from Vero Beach. One of the things that National Aperture has mentioned to this, because they're a high-tech company, they deal in, in these precision lasers, is that the vibration that they experience in that, that building, and we can't do anything about that, the buildings, the building, and that is just causing too much vibration, that's interfering with their manufacturing capabilities. Hence, they have to move on. They are going to stay with, in Indian River County, so that's good for the county, but frankly, they have been excellent tenants at the airport. I was at the airport, recruited those people back in 2010 and got them to come here, came down, moved down here from New Hampshire, they've been excellent tenants, and hate to see them go, but we're asking for approval of this lease addendum.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Do we have an agreement with Flight Safety that they can do stop and goes or touch downs, whatever they do out there?
Essentially, they're, they can do this because they pay a federal excise tax on fuel if they have access to our airport. To Scott's credit, we have voluntary FAA-approved flight procedures for every one of those runways at the airport, which they probably don't follow 90% of the time, is that correct?
Yes.
So that's been a problem, not only for National Aperture, but also for the community as a whole, including Roseland along with the City of Sebastian community. So it, it's been a huge problem, and we've gone to them numerous times, did when I was out at the airport, and frankly, they're non-responsive and they just won't comply.
And they don't have to be.
Is Natural Aperture moving to the Vero Beach Airport?
No, s-- no, ma'am.
Because that would not make any sense at all.
No, no, they're going to build a building out off 512.
Oh.
In the county, though.
So they're not going to be anywhere near an airport?
That's correct.
Okay.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of item 14A.
Second, a motion, a second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Don't worry, I'm not going to make this a habit, but I did want to mention that the Flight Safety using that runway over there, they fly over my place constantly. I mean, it is really an issue if there's anything that we could do to limit it to a more reasonable level. I mean, the other day, I was trying to talk on the phone, I, my phone wouldn't work well inside, I stepped outside, the planes were going overhead so steady and so constant that it was, I mean, it, it's just this year, I don't know when it started, but it's just this year it's gotten really crazy. So if, it's a truly, truly a concern where I'm at, they fly right over my house, and, and it's, and it's really a bit of an issue. I just had to mention that because it's, I didn't realize this would be brought, you know, brought up here. But if there's anything within the power, if there's some rules that these people are not obeying, maybe we can play a little bit of hardball and then force those to make it harder for them to make so many flights every day, make them, you know, I don't know if there's some hoops, we can make them jump through any plane if they're paying an excise task, tax, then they have the right to be there, but it would be nice if, if we could make some sort of a limitation. There may be some public impact regulations that might supersede those if we looked into it, you know, if it's causing problems for residents.
I can assure you that, that we are full steam ahead on doing everything we can do. The city manager is ex-marine commander, pilot of F4s. He started at the city as the, the, the airport manager and did a stellar job out there. He knows rules, regulations, inside out, FAA, and he's working very hard for us to get this taken care of.
I'm actually a student pilot. I lived in an airport in Michigan for a couple months in the summertime. I've got many friends who are pilots. I have no personal animus against pilots, and I think they should have an opportunity to train. There's just, I, I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, I think we should make some reasonable expectations. So I appreciate your point of view. I just wanted to clarify that I have no, you know, I'm not prejudiced against any kind of flights or pilots.
No, my point to you was that we're doing everything we can moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Jeez, must be a late night for you, Ben.
Ben Hocker, Sebastian. Coming from up in New York, I was on the island, we had a small airport. Going through a community like this, we had a commercial airline that came in. I don't know how they did it, but the airport had commercial restrictions, non-flight after 10 o'clock. And it was many years, I believe it's still in effect, and Southwest is a major flyer out of that airport.
Okay. Ben, this item, Ben, this agenda is about the lease extension with Aperture. So, but I appreciate your comments.
Oh, okay, I missed what...
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? Counsel, any discussions or questions of staff? All right, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, new business, item 14B. Direct the process for the selection of the grand marshal for the 4th of July parade. What happened with the...
Lions Club.
The Lions Club.
Well, a lot of this is informational. The Lions Club, at one of our meetings, I think it was December, then we had a subsequent meeting in January, they had requested to get out of the parade business. There's people who have gone off the top and, or have just gotten a little elderly, and the pressures are great with that parade, on parade time, they really are. The parade's gotten bigger year over year, and it is a, a big undertaking for the Lions. Now, the Lions still want to do their, the, the Riverview Park Festival, and city is still responsible for the pyrotechnic display, and also the guy jumping out of, the guys jumping out of the airplanes with the, the American flag, we still take care of that, but it was agreed at one of these meetings that the city would, would take over the parade. Now, I talked to Vice Mayor Kitchen, and apparently, that's the way it used to be years ago, that the city did this. So I think it's appropriate, at least for the short term, unless maybe another service organization steps up, that the city do this and we get into the planning for the 4th of July parade, because it's going to be here before we know it. Toward that end, there's always this issue about the grand marshal, and who picks that? Herefore, the Lions picked the grand marshal, and they were designated and, and did the parade. I think it's appropriate that council get into that decision process. What I'm suggesting is that, not tonight, but at some point, probably community development will bring forth a couple names, slight resume, the reasons why a person or an organization should be the grand marshal, we'll bring that forward to council, council can make that decision. The other thing, in the interest of, of, of the organization as a whole and what goes on, especially at the beginning of the parade, I don't know if members of council have ever been down there during the beginning, and it can be a, for lack of a better term, a huge cluster, that there, we designate someone a parade czar, really to designate who goes where, what the order of battle is, so that there's more organization down there, there's less conflict. And frankly, I am going to nominate the council, Andrea Coy, to do that. I think she is incredibly qualified and, and wants to do something like that, and I think that would be a good choice. So those are kind of the things that I'm throwing out to council tonight to consider.
And what about the judges? If you take out the judges and you don't give awards, we're not going to get as many
If you take out the judges and you don't give awards, we're not going to get as many floats in that parade.
Well, that's another thing that we wanted to discontinue the judges. It's open for discussion. This is going to be the city's parade except for this year, maybe not later, but for this year it's going to be the city's parade. Council wants to establish judges. Might be appropriate that we have three or four or five members of council judging the parade.
I mean, I think this is, I think it's just lunacy to have city council decide, you know, the order of parade and the Grand Marshal and the, how many pickup trucks you can have in it and whether or not we're going to do the judging on it. I think we should have, don't, I mean, do we have any committees or boards out there that can work this? Because, I mean, I don't think that council should be picking the Grand Marshal. I don't think that should be a political decision, you know, and it's very disappointing that the Lions have decided to pull themselves out of this. And maybe if we could get the Lions to just make the determination on a couple of those issues, who's going to be the Grand Marshal and then the city take over the function of the process and putting people in the spaces. I mean, they don't need to wash their hands completely of this. I don't, I cannot imagine us sitting up here and debating, well, let's make this guy the Grand Marshal or this guy the Grand Marshal and I want city council to be fourth in line versus third. And it just doesn't seem like a function of council to me. But maybe a staff committee or if we could get the Lions engaged in some of those issues that don't need to become political issues. I mean, you know, Ms. Coy, I love her to death, but, you know, she hates squirt guns and who knows how many, you know, Ms. Coy with the iron fist down there, or, you know, we have a special parade. Are we going to start limiting the amount of tow trucks that are allowed? Are we going to start limiting the amount of politicians that are allowed? Are we going to start limiting things that, quite frankly, make our thousands of people per year come down to watch our parade? And so, I am very, very worried about this and I know it's stupid to be worried about this because it's just a parade, but the Fourth of July is a very special, special day in Sebastian and the Lions Club has been done, does such a great job in this. And boy, I sure hate to see this parade turn into something that it shouldn't. And so, I don't think we should be even having much of this discussion, but that's just me and I'm all ears.
How does this affect our Christmas parade? Do the Lions Club have anything to do with that?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay.
And we have, Bruce is the czar of the Christmas parade and he does a great job.
Maybe Bruce should be the de-master.
Right, it's about a third the size of, it's maybe a tenth the size.
You can make Bruce the Grand Marshal.
It's a difficult undertaking, I'll grant you. I mean, it's, you have hundreds of vehicles parked along, all over the riverfront and, gosh, it's staging and it's so much stuff and it's, who's going to do it? You're not asking us to do it, who's going to do it?
Well, I mean, if council wants to say, staff, take it over and do it, the new city manager is going to have to make a designation of the Grand Marshal. And if that person can make that designation without fear of retribution or shouts of being political, you know how those things get started?
Oh, my God, that's so crazy.
Well, maybe the hometown news could put a little article in there. If you have recommendations for a Grand Marshal and reasons why, you know, send them in. That'll give us some names. That's not people we're picking, that's people that the citizens of Sebastian are picking.
Just like it used to be a woman and man of the year or whatever it was.
And that's the way it was when we did it before the Lions Club took it over because my husband and I were on that Fourth of July committee parade.
Maybe Ms. Kitchen should be the parade czar.
Yeah, no.
Does that sound like a motion?
Stop it!
Second. I don't know, counsel, I'm ears. I just, I think that I would like to see, I mean, I'll, I would like to see some engagement from some of the civic organizations or this shouldn't be something that we should be discussing and dealing with, not because it's small, but because it's so big and it shouldn't be political and it shouldn't be.
Well, it's always political.
Well, I know.
Especially in election years.
I'm not talking about the politicians walking down, but the, boy, you could really, if you get the wrong people determining the order and who's going to line up where and how many of this.
Who's going to take the applications for the parade applicants, the city then or the Lions Club?
We're taking the margarita and Community Development.
So, we would be taking the applications?
Taking the applications. Yes, ma'am.
I would make a motion to direct staff to set up a committee of staff members and willing participants from civic organizations to take over the parade.
I mean, that sounds good. I mean, there's a lot of other service organizations. You've got the Rotary Club, you've got the Exchange Club, you've got the Chamber.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
As well as the VFW and the American Legion. And I would argue that we don't need a parade czar because this is the Fourth of July, it should be a parade patriot.
There you go. Is that a second?
Yes. Let's go say amen to that.
Anyone from the public wish to discuss this issue?
As long as my name is not in there.
All right, thank you. Counsel, any further discussion or questions to staff? All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Yvino.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you. Leads us up to the city attorney matters. Jim?
I have nothing really except for to kind of remind all of council. I know we have a busy week coming up. We're going to have our manager selection. There's going to be times in the schedule when there's kind of some mingling going on with the candidates. We just have to all be attentive for you guys if you're talking, because it's so subjective. You're getting to know these people and pretty much anything might filter into that decision-making process. So, when you're involved in any of those mingling times, make sure you kind of keep a separation from each other and don't engage in the conversations together. But I'll be around and available if you guys have any questions or anything.
You'll have your whip and knife.
I'll try. Yeah, I'll be the selection czar. Can I be?
Joe?
I'm not going to live that one down, am I? I do have, I have four things. First thing is I'd like to talk about Florida Power and Light LED lights. Scott and I had a presentation recently from Florida Power and Light. You know, we have about 1,100 streetlights in the City of Sebastian that are controlled by Florida Power and Light. They want to do, and they would do, a free conversion to LED lights. This would do a couple of things for us. This would give us a huge amount of standardization through the city. They're more reliable, obviously, and it would have reduction in cost, albeit not a lot, but there still would be a reduction in cost. And also, the notice of when one of these lights goes out. I know Vice Mayor Kitchen knows this. Really, the only way we find out in City Hall when a streetlight is out is if a citizen reports it. With this new system, it would be a smart technology. They would get the notice down in their headquarters in Juno Beach and then they would come out and fix the light. So, this is an operational agreement. I'd like to inform council, I'm going to proceed with this. This will take for the conversion of all 1,100 lights. It will take about a year, but going to proceed with this and probably give them notice, but I wanted to let council know this evening what we're going to do. Next thing, we're talking about the Exchange Club in the hallway in City Hall in between finance and Community Development. There's a big blank wall. We converted that wall to being blank because the Exchange Club is donating a freedom shrine to us. These are copies of all important documents related to the United States, Constitution, Emancipation Proclamation, Washington's first inaugural address, et cetera, et cetera. There's about 19 or so documents and that's going to be in the hallway in City Hall. I think it'll be a really nice addition. Jim Testa and his staff is working on getting that installed, so it'll be in the next couple of days. We'll have a proper dedication and then I'll have Exchange Club members here, perhaps the next meeting, to talk about it. Over on I-95, there's an FDOT notice out that on April, darn it, it's the third and fourth, there's going to be some delays out there because of pedestrian crosswalk that they are installing over I-95. There's kind of different times and things like that, but if folks are going to be traveling out there in 95 at the Sebastian entrance or exit there on I-95, be aware of those delays. Next week is a busy week as far as city manager recruitment and possible selection. On the fourth, which is Wednesday, there is going to be a public workshop and that's going to be scheduled and the timing on that is going to be a start of 1:30 in the afternoon, correct? So, 1:30 on Wednesday will be the public workshop for public interviews and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Ms. Williams?
All right, I have a couple of items real quick for you, Mr. Griffin. The docks that were just recently reconstructed, there's a couple of issues down there that I think still need to be figured out and resolved. Now, we had discussion on a floating dock down there. Prior to the hurricanes, there was indeed a floating dock that made it much easier for handicap and elderly to get onto their boats. That dock has not been replaced and I believe that it needs to be because the docks are quite high when there's boats next to them and it, so it's very difficult for handicap and the elderly to get in and out of the boats. A floating dock helps to alleviate that a lot and we had one there prior. So, I don't know what the situation is with that or are we done looking into it or are we?
The dock, the floating dock was demolished. I did look into it. I tried to get a donation from some fishermen. That was not forthcoming, so it's kind of gone by the wayside, but I'll revive that and take a look and see what, might have to go out and might have to purchase something, but I'll look into it.
Well, I'm certainly not opposed to it, to purchasing it or having something brought back to us with whatever the cost is for that and the installation because, again, we have a lot of boaters here and a lot of them are elderly or handicapped and we've been doing a really good job of being ADAD compliant throughout the community and I think it would, I mean, as it was there prior, I think we should have it back. So, thank you for that. The other thing is the fish cleaning station at the Main Street Boat Ramp. What has become of that?
The initial report that I got was that it was either FDAP or the Army Corps did not allow that during our design of that rebuild. I'm going to have to go with that right now because that was the last I heard. I know there's been some rumblings about why can't we get that in there?
Right.
And that was, that was the last I heard and actually Brothers Construction, those were the instructions given to them also. I will check on it.
Please do me a favor and take a look at that and see if there's any way to get that back. It doesn't make sense that we wouldn't, or folks wouldn't be able to clean their fish and dispose of the fish in an area where it would be most sanitary and most environmentally sound, so. All right, thank you. That's all I have this evening. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, well, you gave us on the fourth, Joe, the 1:30 PM for the public interviews for the city managers. What time are we to be here for the private interviews on that day?
8:30 in the morning on Wednesday.
8:30 Wednesday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what time for the reception?
That is 5 o'clock.
I thought it was 5 and not 6, okay, 5 PM.
I will, I'll have the packet of information for council by Friday with all those instructions.
Okay. I think that's, I can't think of anything else right now.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Yvino.
Mr. Griffin, can you, and I know you have before, will you just send out the agenda one more time via email in regards to next week, if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that. I have nothing.
All right. Councilmember McPartlin.
I'm noticing on the bottom of the sheet here, the future council meetings, and it says April 4th, the special city council meeting at 5. I thought that was April 5th, if we needed that one on Thursday night.
Well, we actually have.
We do have one April 4th as well.
The schedule calls for workshop at 1:30, a workshop at 1:30 for the public and then the city council meeting so the council can interview as a group.
We're trying not to do the one on the 5th.
Yes, we are.
I'll try and get a schedule.
To accommodate Mr. Yvino.
Hey, hey, hey.
I can't help it, I got to work a full-time job.
All right, thank you.
And then just one thing I want to bring up is, you know, there was the incident where the county employee got arrested for the theft in the county. And I know this was a concern to Mr. Griffin several years ago and I would, because it's kind of like a black eye to any kind of city or county office and they think there's no oversight. And I know Mr. Griffin had put several oversights in place that were also pointed out by the auditor. And if you could just expand on that, that that's not going to happen here, Mr. Griffin.
Well, I don't think you can ever be 100% that nothing will ever happen, but it, we have, we have a couple of different hurdles that people have, that we have to go through before we ever get a check cut for any good or service. I believe it's adequate. One of the reasons that a couple of years ago I hired a purchasing manager was because of just that, that would, another set of eyes, another level of scrutiny. So, is anything ever perfect? No, but I hope we've put enough controls in place, as Ross was talking about tonight, to combat any of that, those bad things.
I have one more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, is that all, Mr. Partland? All right, thanks, sir.
Where in City Hall will the plans be for the 510 improvements?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I read an article in the paper that the library and both City Hall will have plans for the 510 improvements from 512 down to 58.
Really?
Where in City Hall will they be?
That one's news to me.
Someone from FDOT did contact me and asked if they could leave the plans with me, but I haven't received them yet.
Okay, so they'll be in the clerk's office then?
In the clerk's office, correct.
That's my question.
8 to 4:30.
I'm sorry.
Anything else, guys?
That's it, for me.
All right, there being no further business, we are adjourned.